Councilmember Peterson?
Here.
Councilmember Termini?
Here.
Councilmember Bertrand?
Here.
Councilmember Botwilt?
Here.
Mayor Harland? Here. Will everyone please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance? First item is a report on the closed session.
Thank you, Mayor Harland, members of the City Council. This evening, the council met at 6:30 and closed the session to consider three liability claims. Those are the claims of Fan Fan Huang, Savannah Smith, and Ian Smith and the estate of Luke Ian Howard Smith. There was no reportable action. Those items are also listed as items eight, D, E, and F on your consent agenda.
Thank you very much. The meeting is cable cast live tonight on Charter Communications Cable, Television Channel Eight and AT&amp;T U-verse Channel Ninety-Nine, and it's being recorded and will be rebroadcast on the following Wednesday at 8:00 a.m. and on Saturday, following the first rebroadcast at 1:00 p.m. on Charter Channel Seventy-One and Comcast Channel Twenty-Five. Meetings can also be viewed from the city's website, www.cityofcapitola.org. And tonight, our technician is Scott Gray. Thank you very much. And as a reminder, please turn off your cell phones during the meeting and please sign in if you'd like to so you have your name spelled correctly in the minutes. The next item is additional materials. We have a few tonight on our di-.
Yes, we received four items, all for item nine A. They are public comment regarding the Grand Avenue pathway.
Thank you. Next item is additions and deletions to the agenda.
Staff has no changes.
Now is the time for public comments. If anyone would like to address us on anything not on the agenda, please come up and address us. Otherwise, please wait till your item is on the agenda and then you're welcome to speak on any item. Would anyone like to address us on any general items? Then we'll go on to City Council comments. Ed, do you have anything?
I just have one. I just would like to put on the agenda for future discussion about changing the time limits on the parking signs in the City Hall parking lot in the area.
That sounds like a good idea. Anything else?
That's it.
Jacque, do you have anything? Mike, do you have anything?
Yes. Big news. Summer is here. In your, the lightest news of the night, but you'll receive your postcards. Residents of Capitola, the summer concerts start on June seventh. The car show is coming up just a week, half a week after that. This has all the great events for the summer on it to conveniently put onto your refrigerator with everyone else's. Thank you.
Kristin, do you have anything?
Yeah, just one. On Monday, June fifth at 4:30, there will be a Capitola Women's Leadership Mixer. It's an opportunity for women who are interested in being more politically or just community-wise involved in their community. It's a chance to mingle with other women who are already on boards or commissions or in elected office and to learn more about the potential for doing so yourself. And so again, that's at 4:30 on June fifth at Paradise Beach Grill. And we do request an RSVP. My email is on the city website. And we would look forward to having as many Capitola women as possible to be there. So we welcome you all.
Great. Thank you, Jacque.
I was just wondering if City Manager could have a report on the beach and the work that's been done recently.
Sure. We can do that now or we can do it during staff comments.
Staff comments is great.
Great.
Great. City Tracer, your comments.
The Financial Advisory Committee met this week. We have some suggestions or reached an agreement on the budget and some comments on there and some suggestions on this year's budget. And we will be ready to present those for your consideration at the next meeting.
Great. Thank you. Staff comments.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. Give you a quick update on the beach work that's going on right now. We've been fighting high tides and high surf all week. And we lost our first closure, which means it breached on Wednesday night. So we've kind of reevaluated and have a closure in place right now. They're working on grading the beach in front of the esplanade right now, and they'll be working on it tomorrow. We anticipate to have the lagoon in place over the weekend. We will be keeping the dozer on the beach, not operating it this weekend, but in case we have any problems with the lagoon itself so that we don't lose that. Then next week, we are going to have to do another opening to actually make our final closure when we secure the area under the flume and things like that. So we'll be continuing that and then we'll do additional grading of the beach as we go on. So we will have a beach for Memorial Day weekend and then we'll be doing more work next week.
Have you gotten any calls about the helicopter flying over for the SoCal Creek Water District checking for saltwater intrusion?
I haven't had any calls myself.
We have a helicopter that's going to be flying around for a couple of days with a big circular device that somehow detects saltwater intrusion. And they're going to be flying around town for a couple of days, so we may see that.
I think it happened already.
Yeah.
Yeah, but they won't go over houses or anything. Yeah.
I believe that already took place. I think that was last weekend. I do want to recognize Steve and the Public Works crew. The issue this year has been the high flow in the creek. We're right at the cusp of being able to convey the water that's coming down SoCal Creek through the flume. And so that's posed a lot of challenges because usually we have a lot lower flow at this time of year and it's much easier to close the beach and just grade the thing out. And so it's been a real balancing act and kudos to Steve and the rest of the crew for managing it this year because it hasn't been easy.
Thank you. Any other comments? Any other staff comments? Then we'll go on to Board and Commission appointments. And we have one for the alternate to the Community Action Board. Linda?
Yes, we are pleased Councilmember Peterson has been our representative for the past three years, even pre-councilmember, and she is willing to continue serving in that capacity. And also made contact with another Capitola resident, Tanya Allen, who has expressed interest in taking the alternate position. She has already met with the Community Action Board Executive Committee and their recommendation is in your packet. So staff's recommendation is to reappoint Councilmember Peterson and appoint Tanya Allen for the three-year term to the Community Action Board.
Madam Mayor, I would move that we reappoint Councilmember Peterson and appoint Allen for the Community Action Board.
I'll second that.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Motion passes unanimously. And Tanya, are you here? Would you like to speak? We'd love to meet you. Welcome. Thank you.
Thank you so much, Mayor Stephanie Harland and Vice Mayor Michael Termini and City Member Councilmembers. I wanted to introduce myself. As you know, I'm Tanya Allen. And I've lived in Santa Cruz County for over twenty years and currently live in Capitola. I've lived here for twelve years. My son goes, is in sixth grade and goes to New Brighton Middle School. In the past, I was a member of the Site Council at Main Street School with Principal Annette Bitters. While my son attended there, I'm in the process of pursuing my multi-teaching, multi-subject teaching credential. I attended Kirbyo College and then transferred to Cal State Monterey Bay. Their mascot is the Monterey Otters. And as Kristin says, go Otters. Which brings me to how I became interested in CAB. I read a small post by Kristen Peterson in Nextdoor, which is a website my dad recommended me that can get you involved with the community. In the small post, she shared her background and interest in the community and her involvement in CAB. I was excited to read that she was an alumni of CSUMV. And I then read a little bit about CAB and immediately wanted to become involved. These agencies within CAB really bridge the gaps in the community and bring people together. And I'm looking forward to meeting you in the community and to be able to contribute to this healthy, unique, safe family environment. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Really happy to, happy that you're going to be representing us there. That's wonderful. Thank you very much. Next item is the consent calendar. This is, these are relatively minor items that we will pass in one motion unless someone would like to have a separate motion on any item. So would any Councilmember like to pull an item for separate discussion?
I'll move consent, but I think Jacque has a question. Yeah, on the meeting minutes. So Councilman Mike Termini had mentioned that he was glad that, a request to consider the rail as the only option on the current, for walking and biking. And I made a comment that I'd like to include in the minutes because I feel it's important to the city of Capitola. This city went through a pretty long and well-organized way to reach out to its citizens called Vision Capitola. And one of the things that came out of Vision Capitola was that a lot of people, at least at the two meetings that came, really would like a walking and a biking trail. And so I respect that as input from the city. And so that's one reason why I brought it up to the RTC.
Thank you.
I just want that in the minutes.
I'll second that motion to adopt the calendar.
Would anyone from the public like to pull an item for separate discussion? Are there any other comments on the consent calendar?
And that is moved with the amendment to the minutes.
Yes.
Any other discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Motion carries unanimously. Thank you. The next item is item nine A, the geological report and continuation of the temporary closure of the Grand Avenue pathway. Thank you all for being here tonight to talk to us about that.
So, once again, Mayor and Council, I have a short PowerPoint presentation to give you, which is going to give us the background and talk about the recommendations. And then Eric Zinn with Zen Geology is here tonight. If there's any questions of him before we open the public hearing, he is available. So before we actually get into it, I wanted to just talk about the noticing we did for tonight's hearing. On May eighteenth of this year, a notice was posted on each side of the pathway where the closure is in place. And then approximately a hundred and sixty postcards were mailed out to property owners, residents, and occupants within five hundred feet of Grand Avenue between Oakland and Hollister. So we didn't do a citywide notice, but we did do, reached out to those in the immediate neighborhood and those that use the path. So looking at the Grand Avenue pathway, this is a map that is in the agenda packet. And I just wanted to use it here to talk about a couple of things. First of all, I've added a couple of lines in here that aren't in there. First is the straight. If you can tell, it's a blue line here. That is the property line. On this side is private property. On this is the old Grand Avenue roadway. And this purple line here is the fence line that is existing out there today. And then we broke, the geologists broke the bluff face into three zones. We have Block A, which is right here, which is where we had the significant failure this year. Block B in the middle and Block C where we had some sloughing off of the marine terrace up above. So talk about those. I already kind of did. Block A, we had the big failure there. It's probably, the bedrock portion of it's probably pretty stable for right now. The toe of it is well-protected by the debris that came off. And the marine deposits will be trying to recline to their natural angle of repose, which is about thirty-eight degrees. If I go back to this picture right here. So what we're talking about, this is the section through this zone right here. This is the existing bluff face at a very steep angle. It wants to recline naturally back to this angle, thirty-eight degrees. And it's going to continue that depending on all sorts of conditions, rain, natural just erosion will occur until it reaches that thirty-eight degrees if nothing else changes. So that's going to be going on. The same thing over in Section C here, which is over here. It's a little steeper and wants to recline too. So in Block B, that's an area that is severely, the bedrock is severely undercut. And failure of the bedrock in the marine terrace is very likely in the near future in that area. And I have a picture where I'm going to show you that. And that's the area where a lot of my concern is overall, of the three areas, that was my one big area of concern. And Block C, so we've had recent marine terrace failure. The bedrock is undercut, but not as significantly as Block B. And like we talked about, it needs to, marine terrace needs to fall back to its angle of repose. So here's a picture that was provided by one of the neighbors up there on Depot Hill back in, before the significant slide. And this is in 2016. So this is essentially Block A that we just looked at. And this is what came down. You can see the bedrock. So just to help us, this, about the line where the bedrock is below this and there's marine terrace above it. You can see the bedrock is significantly undercut here. And this is what all failed, is this bedrock failed and then let the marine terrace above it fail. You can see in Block B here, it's starting to get undercut. A year ago, it was not significant. And Block C, which I want to see a portion of, is a little better. So this is what it looks like after Block A failed. You can see here's Block A failed. This is the debris from it. You can see it's a mixture of marine terrace and sandstone. But you can see Block C here, Block B, I'm sorry, is now severely undercut itself. And that's just the natural erosion that occurs over time as waves continue to pound on this. It eats away in the wave line and undercuts the marine, or the bedrock. Eventually, the weight of this overhang will fail and cause a significant failure. And then this is Block C, again, starting to undercut here and it's wanting to fall back up here. So if we go back to this map again, it's the exact same map that I showed earlier. Looking at Block A, this is the area where we talked about relocating the pathway into this area right here. And that is something we could proceed with. It'd be a little tricky. You know, can't really put equipment up there. If we do create a pathway, it has to be ADA accessible. So we're kind of balancing things out there. We'd want to relocate the fence probably to the inside of the existing pathway and then open it up in here. In this area, in Bluff B, you can see there's very little room between the bluff face itself, the existing fence, and the private property line. And this is the area that is primed to fail next out there. And that's an area where I think if this, when this fails, we'll probably lose three, four, or five feet. And then we'll be up to the property line or have insufficient area to maintain a trail. In Block C, most of the failure occur here. Probably maintain a road, the pathway there. We may lose the end of it here as this continues to lay back. So my recommendations tonight are that we continue the temporary closure, mainly for safety purposes between Oakland and Hollister. And we continue to evaluate and the conditions and determine what options we have to reopen the pathway sometime in the future. And that's the end of my report. I'd like Eric to, if he could move up here so you can recognize him if you have any questions of Eric at this point. It'd be a good time.
Thank you very much. Are there any questions right now?
Sure. I have a question. If you could just elaborate on that section that Steve just referred to as Block B, about it's, your particular feeling about the stability of that block or the likelihood that that block's failure is imminent?
I, for the record, I'm Eric Zinn with Zen Geology. I'll write it before I leave here. I think that even though Block B hasn't failed, could you give me the photo, figure one? Yeah. If you look at how severely undercut the bedrock is, it, I mean, it's even has, it has another notch down at the sand that the sand's concealing too. So that's imminent. And I, it's difficult to predict precisely when it's going to fail. An earthquake could set it off. It's, I mean, I think it's primed and ready to go right now. It could go next winter if it gets a little bit more erosion at the base. If you look at the marine terrace deposits and how steep they are, you don't even have to have the bedrock topple. Just the marine terrace deposits laying back through shallow landsliding and erosion for all three blocks, including Block B, that's going to take out the footpath in the next one to six years probably. So if you add in the rock topple, it just worsens the situation. It doesn't make it any better. So Block, I think Block B is, you know, I think Block B is just as likely to topple as Block C is. Block A's probably good except for the marine terrace deposits laying back. The rock failed. I mean, what you're going to see is a repeat. What happened on Block A, you're going to see that happen on Block B and Block C. The notch finally got far enough back for Block A that that's what triggered the toppling this winter.
Thank you.
I don't know if I made it clear or muttier for you.
I just wanted to focus on Block B. Thank you.
Okay.
Jacque?
Typically, we advise people not to get close to the edge of the cliff. You know, people walk around here and want to look over and stuff like that. If we were to put in a path and reconfigure what's there right now, how safe would that be for the people who actually do the work?
I, if, as far, the people that are doing the path construction?
It would make the path and putting up the fence.
Yeah, I have specific recommendation.
I'd like to hear your recommendations on that.
And I specifically said, don't operate heavy equipment within fifteen feet. Don't operate it when it's wet because you may end up triggering failure of the bluff itself.
Okay. And putting posts in the ground for a fence or something of that sort?
If you're far enough back, that shouldn't be a problem because you're not triggering, you know, vibrations or loading. That's going to, that's going to cause it to fail.
Okay.
Thank you. Other questions?
No.
Thank you very much. This is a public hearing, so we'll open it up to the public and come up and give us your thoughts and your suggestions. Good evening.
My name is John Hart. I live at 404 Grand Avenue, which doesn't exist, but they still call it 404 Grand Avenue. I sent an email to Steve and I think he forwarded it to all of you with my suggestions. So I don't see any point in me rereading my email to you, but my question, do you have any questions about it? Does it make sense to you? Or does it, no, it made perfect sense. Thank you. And informing that committee to look into it makes sense?
Okay. Thank you very much.
Especially the mayor sharing it. Was that even?
Thank you.
Okay.
Other comments? Good evening.
My name's Lester Loops. I live at 308 Grand Avenue, the corner of Oakland and Grand. I bought the house in nineteen ninety. Now live there full-time. I have plenty of room on Grand Avenue in front of my house at this time. But I think maintaining that pathway is an asset to the city of Capitola and that people use it, children play on it, people walk their dogs on it, and they like that full pathway. And I would like to see some plan to restore the existing pathway that we've lost in front of 404 Grand and maintain the full length of that pathway along Grand Avenue. So, thank you.
Thank you. Good evening.
Hi, I'm Carla Christensen. I live up on Depot Hill also on 101 Saxon, so I'm not immediately affected. But the front of the cliff, in front of my house, has an incipient landslide also probably. You know, it even fell a little bit this winter. I think part of the problem was, this is a Pineapple Express here and there's a significant erosion from the top of the bluff. And I think we have lived in, on Saxon for, since nineteen ninety-one. And we haven't seen any erosion from the top until this year. This is a pretty stupendous year for rainfall. And, but part of the other, part of it is we had a very unsightly mesh tarp covering over the top of the bluff. And I think that stabilized that part of the cliff in front of our house. And I was going to ask what other, you know, there, I think there's some other options that are short of a massive seawall and things like that that can be done to stabilize the cliff. Down over by Opel Cliff, near Privates, there's a homeowner there stabilizing, having the same problem. The cliff is budding against his house. It's eroded that far. And he is now involved in drilling in and, what's that called? The spray concreting the top of the bluff, not the bottom. I think that might be a harder issue to pursue, but it could be done on a selective basis. So it's worth looking into if you're really interested in maintaining the pathway. And also, I'd like to question you on the, your estimate of the one foot per recession.
Let me have you address the council and then we'll see if you want to get an answer.
Yeah. Well, you said we should ask some questions. But anyway, it's definitely not the same, it's not uniform across the cliff. You know, this, over the years, sand has filled in, you know, as a recovery from the yacht harbor, you know, when that was dug, the jetties were, the big jetties were dug in. That caused significant erosion in Capitola South. And slowly, and we saw it really dramatically this year, there's been a significant, you know, amount of sand finally making its way down toward our, our area. So some, I don't think, I'm not sure the one foot per year is really the standard anymore either. So I think it's suitable for reevaluation too and not to make an assumption on, on that just because that was the way it was twenty, thirty years ago. Anyway.
You think it's more than that or less than that?
I think it's less depending on the cliff, with cliff, you know, part of the cliff. But if you look at it, you know, there's a lot of sand there and there's been a lot of sand all winter despite the fact that there's been a lot of storms and a lot of rain. And so I think it's worth doing a global, a global assessment of the whole cliff because it's, the entire path is important to everybody in Capitola and other visitors too. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Who else would like to speak? Come on up. Good evening.
Hi, I'm Gene Bernall, 406 Grand. First of all, I want to thank you for bringing this up. I know how busy you can be being married to a councilperson in another city. I want to reiterate what John Hart said in his email. Yes, there's an immediate problem now. Yes, there's a long-range problem. You've got to tackle a long-range problem. We brought this to the city about fifteen years ago and nothing happened to it. And now we see the result of it. Having a citywide committee to study this, whether you really want this, how we might tackle this, et cetera, would be a great idea. The one thing I wanted to bring up was, was there any possibility of going in and filling up the caves now on a temporary basis? It doesn't have to be the permanent basis where you have to put in the heavy-duty concrete, but just a temporary basis so that at least the cliff stabilizes, giving you a little bit more time. And that's all I want to say.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Good evening.
I'm Connie Welch. And I just feel like that area is a park. And it's probably one of the most used parks in Capitola. And if you go up there at any time, there's multiple people walking along there. And I think it's really an important area to try and save and to put effort and time into it. And I feel like if there weren't houses that encroached on that or yards that encroached on that city's land, we would already be putting a path down. If we just had free area to put a path down, we'd already be putting a new path down and we'd all be walking there already. So I just feel like that's something to think about also.
Thank you very much. Good evening.
Good evening.
Tom Parker and I live at 306.
Is he speaking in the microphone?
Tom Parker and I live at 306 Grand Avenue. We've been there about 20 years. At a meeting I was at with Christine there prior to the election, I talked about Capitola and those things that most represent it. I think there's really three areas, as I told her before. One is the pier riverwalk area, one is the esplanade, and the other thing that represents Capitola, maybe even more so to the residents than any of these other places, is the walk along the cliff, Depot Hill. So I know your recommendation is to close that part of the path. It's, you know, 20% of that whole cliffwalk area. And if you deem it important to do that, I would hope that you would, along with that, try to come up with a solution that would allow us later to reopen it. A solution of some, you know, whether it be jetties, which would allow the, the sand to build like this jetty did in Capitola after the harbor was built, or doing something along the bluff. Anyhow, I, as a longtime member of this community, I'd really like to see us, if we have a short-term problem we have to resolve or can't do it now, have to wait till later, I'd like to see us start thinking about a longer-term solution that would help maintain the city as we have all come to know it. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Good evening.
Hi, I'm Tim Matthews. I live on Hollister. I've lived there for 22 years. And I just, I read the report. I was just curious, I'd asked the geologist, what percentage of the cliff is currently at a 38-degree angle repose? And I would guess there's zero. And it's, we lived there for 20 years, and there's been a few episodes where the cliff has fallen, but basically, it's been reasonably stable. Eventually, I'm sure, it's going to go all the way back to El Salto. But it just seems kind of short-sighted at this point, when there is a right-of-way, the city-owned right-of-way, to cut off the path that's really important to the neighborhood and based on a, you know, an estimate of how long it's going to last. So it was a very hard winter, and, but over the last 20 years, there's probably been three or four episodes when the cliff has fallen. And it just seems to me like we should open the path for the people of Capitola. Thank you.
Thank you. Good evening.
Good evening, TJ Welch. And I find myself with my neighbors presenting some information, same request to you about keeping this path open. Also notice that I don't see a lot of the 38-degree repose along the, along that area. I can remember high school days driving down that street, so obviously, this is, you know, a problem that's going to keep progressing unless we do something maybe more long-term. And I find myself in a really unusual position of finding myself in agreement with the Coastal Commission, which probably won't happen again, is my guess, but their recommendation is to try to keep this open. And if that's the case, then I think if we look across the other nations and areas, there's a lot of discussions about these finger jetties putting the sand in there. And I think the expert in this case has talked about how the sand is protecting some of that bluffed area. And if we can do that by putting jetties in there, maybe we can get the Coastal Commission to help us find a solution so, you know, all of Capitola can appreciate that walk that they currently spend a lot of time up there. So thank you on this, and I hope you consider the Coastal Commission's recommendation of keeping it open.
Thank you. Would anyone else like to speak? Then I'll close the public hearing and bring it back to the council. Would you like to, Mr. Zinn, would you like to address some of the comments that were made or some of the questions about the, the angle and how much of the cliff is at that angle?
Certainly. I think, I may have lost track of all the questions, so somebody can jump in.
How, how much of the pathway has the angle of repose existing now? Because I have to agree that virtually none of it does.
Yeah. None of what I studied looked like it was anywhere near the angle of repose, so. And it, you know, to answer the, there was a question about the one foot per year. That's a citation from a study done by Rogers Johnson Associates for the Depot Hill Geological Hazard Abatement District. And I do, I agree with, with the person that, that said that. It's, it's a long-term retreat rate, and the retreat rate is actually based on episodes that are, that are widely spaced. So for example, earthquakes, we'll lose a very large chunk of the bluff if we have an earthquake in the next five to 10 years. And then that, you know, so you might lose 10, 20 feet of bluff in one fell swoop like we did in 1989. If we have a larger earthquake than that, you might lose more. So I ostensibly ignored that long-term retreat rate, I, because it's a long-term retreat rate. And talking with Steve and giving you guys a sense of short-term, I was just studying the physical setting and trying to predict how fast things are going to retreat. See, what was the, oh, there was a question about plugging the base. And then there was also a question that kind of goes with it, that was, that someone was suggesting that you construct a retaining wall in the upper bluff to retain the marine terrace deposits. I think that was basically what they're, what they were discussing. If you're going to, if you're going to dedicate hardware and money and time to constructing things in the upper bluff, you really need to keep in mind that everything's controlled by the bottom. So each, that's going to fail, and it'll undermine anything you put up there. So you know, you want to, you want to consider the resource, the financial resources you put into it. And, and of course, you know, work with, do further geology and geotechnical engineering and all the other engineers that get involved with doing something like that. The suggestion to plug the notch is actually a reasonable suggestion. We did that for Crest Apartments. We had a wave-cut notch at the base there, and we plugged it with what's called frangible concrete. It's, it's just, it's really weak concrete that has the same consistency of the rock and the same erosion, the same ability to resist erosion. Anything that you do at the bottom will, it will take time to study it, but even more importantly, it will take time to process it through the Coastal Commission. I am hearing people say that there's, the Coastal Commission's position is that the footpath should be preserved. I've seen it happen before. I, for example, I've worked on the sinkholes on West Cliff Drive for the City of Santa Cruz. You would think that they would want, they would want to commit resources to, to keep that footpath open. The Coastal Commission, they've leveled an enforcement action against them for the repairs that were done. So I see, I see them say one thing. I would, I would love to see them, because I, I'm a local too, I'd love to see them get behind preserving this. So that would be one relatively cheap, quick way to, to at least arrest the, the issue of the undercut notch causing the collapse. If you could fill that with frangible concrete, that might.
And when that was done before, the property owners paid for that? The city didn't pay for that? That was done by the private property owners, I think?
Yeah. In the instance of Crest Apartments, that was done by, because we were looking at trying to arrest the erosion that was going to undermine the apartments, the condominiums there. I think that answers all the questions.
Are there other questions?
Could you ask a question to him?
Sure.
I was wondering.
Come up to that, come up and speak in the microphone, because this is televised. People at home want to, want to hear what you have to say.
Yeah. My question is.
Speak into, speak into the microphone and address the council. Thank you.
Okay. I'm talking to you, but I'm going to go this way. My question is that I had assumed that because we never saw a 38-degree repose at the top of the cliff, it was due to the fact that the bottom of the cliff basically fell away too quickly for the 38 degrees to form, which basically says you've got a, I mean, the biggest problem we've got is the bottom of the cliff. The top of the cliff is not getting time to erode much at all, so.
Was, that was actually a question?
That's my question.
Okay.
Sounded more like a finding to me, and it was reasonable. So in the end, I think the takeaway, at least from the geological perspective, is that the, the, the big controlling factor is what's going on at the base. And it happens, the, the failure happens episodically. Sometimes it's spaced, it's widely spaced. You can see the bluff was undercut on all three blocks, but only one block collapsed. It, that kind of speaks to how, how difficult it is to predict precisely when something's going to go. We know it's going to happen. We know, we do know the long-term retreat rate based on aerial photos that go all the way back to 1928. You know, it's episodic. You're going to lose big chunks, and then you might have drought, five, 10 years of drought when nothing happens. You might have an earthquake in there. There's all sorts of things that contribute to it. The bluff will, for sure, the bluff will continue to retreat, even if it doesn't get, even if the undercut notch doesn't cause complete collapse, you're still going to have the marine terrace deposits laid back in the near term.
Thank you very much. Any other questions? Thank you very much. We might have some later. Well, who would like to start, Mike?
Sure. I think it should be noted that, that being familiar with the Coastal Commission and speaking out of both sides of their mouth, happens often. We might also note that the letter we received should not be taken as gospel. It was one of the staff person's considered opinion. So, you know, I like it, but I don't put a lot of faith in it as a basis for going back to the Coastal Commission and asking them to let us do things that they have said no too many times. Leave that aside for now. We, as a council, we have been unfairly relinquishing responsibility for that whole stretch to the now inactive GHA, the Geological Hazard Abatement District. We felt that it was formed, there was a committee, there was, there were residents meeting, and, well, we don't have to think about it. And again, that was unfair, and I think we were shorting our city duty for many years. We unfortunately will very, probably, Steve, accelerate the demise of this path merely by trying to fix it right now. I am concerned. I am concerned about our employees. I'm concerned about the public walking on there later. And frankly, short of a taking, and that is taking private property as city property, I don't want to be the council member to ever bring that forward. But short of doing that, and all the neighbors that face that path coming up here to this podium and saying, "I'll give you 20 feet of my backyard," I don't think that's going to happen in my lifetime. But that's the only thing that's going to make this real, if we want to open the path, you know, for a good, long time and make it perfectly safe. It's interesting that sand is turning into the key to a lot of this, and the, the sand groynes and the, and the jetties have done a lot to keep sand underneath this cliff area. But there have often been winters in the last five, 10 years where even those sand groynes have not let enough sand deposit. Sometimes we lose a good portion of that sand. The migration still takes place southward. So that would be something, at some point in the future, the committee, which I believe is a must in this situation, should be able to develop a plan to approach the Coastal Commission, because they will tell us whether or not we can capture sand as it migrates. But I think that that's a really big component. I think we have a better chance of convincing them to let us capture the sand than we do of them letting us clad the bottom of that cliff. That would almost be an immediate no from them. I've seen them do it over and over again with multimillion-dollar houses teetering on the edge, and they just say no. And just for anyone who hasn't dealt with the Coastal Commission, there is no appeal from a Coastal Commission decision. So no is truly no. I used to think that cladding the top of the bluff was a great idea. And then talking to geologists, watching the various failures, we all know, it's, it doesn't take a brain surgeon to realize that the ocean is winning year after year undercutting it, which is why we haven't developed the level, the angle of repose. So cladding the top is not necessarily the answer. I agree with the comment that was made about it being a park. It is, it's truly parkland, and it's truly public, and it's truly well-used, and it is truly the most dangerous park we have, without a shadow of a doubt. The upper level as well as the lower level. Is it worth $40,000 to save this section of path? Oh, absolutely. Such a small amount of money to save this part of the path. For just a year, now we have to discuss it. Maybe six months? Maybe we spend $40,000, we push back the backyards to the city property line without taking any property, and we still have a dangerous path. And we still have a path that is questionable whether it's ADA accessible at that point, because there are places where it's narrow enough to where it might not be ADA accessible. And you can't just think of it as all the available land between the property line, the city line, and the edge of the cliff. We're not going to put a fence at the edge of the cliff. The fence posts are going to be dug several feet back from there. I think, and I'm sad to say, that I believe that this section of the path should be closed. And at the same time, this closure of this section, this 20% of the path, has to be the wake-up call, and we have to start some long-range plan here. Because even though it seems like there's ample room between the edge of the cliff and the homes, in, in the long range, in the long term, there is not. As we heard, we could lose zero feet for 10 years, we could lose 20 feet a year later. So truly, the homes are in danger, even though it may look, not look like it right now. So again, my position is, we do not go forward and we keep the path closed, and we, at the same time, form a, a citizens committee attended by whoever the mayor may appoint or herself, and start to come up with a long-range plan.
Kristen?
I'm, I feel like I'm hearing a lot of anxiety from people about the idea that we are going to lose this very valuable and beautiful public space. And I share that anxiety. I live on Oakland, I walk my dog up there, I run up there, I power walk up there. But I understand that anxiety, and ultimately, I think we all want to be able to be on, on that portion of the path. And, and staff, correct me if I'm wrong, but if, from my understanding, what we are looking at tonight is maintaining a temporary closure, and in doing so, that would allow us the time and opportunity to consider some of these great options for long-term plans that maybe would allow us to move the path back and reopen it sometime in the future once we've addressed the longer-term problems, that if not addressed, we're going to lose any new path we would build within the next one to six years. And with that in mind, you know, I, I would agree that it would be best at this time to maintain the temporary closure so that we may allow ourselves the opportunity to find a way to, at some point, again, open it at a time where we may not have to face this situation again, where we're going to have to consider once again how we're going to, how we're going to handle this path once it erodes back to the new fence line, because perhaps we will, by that time, have addressed that problem, and then we're just going to have that path, and we're going to be happy. And perhaps not. But I, I agree that for now, that maintaining the temporary closure will give us the opportunity and the time to look into those options.
So I think it was John wrote a letter, and he commented that it is a temporary, excuse me, it was a firsthand look at what the situation is. And so we had to respond quickly, and that's what we came up with. But I believe it's based on what's been occurring up and down the coast. This is not an unusual situation. But we do have options, it seems, and I think that should be explored. So I'm fully in support of a committee of citizens, maybe in conjunction with the GHA, because it's inclusive of all the members up in Depot Hill, to consider what we can do and better understand what the situation is. I'd like to also point out that there's a lot of other things in the city of Capitola that we have to make decisions on in terms of spending money. So it is a balance. It is a balance, but it's also cognizant of the fact that we all know the beach and that whole environment, including the cliff and the path along there, is very important to the city of Capitola, and I recognize that. I think Kristen was very well pointed when she talked about understanding the anxiety of the neighbors. There's property, there's view, there's value in all of those things, and to lose those is a considerable blow to anyone who lives up there. It's a considerable blow to anyone who lives in Capitola. My wife and I walked there, a lot of us do, so I understand that completely. Another aspect that I think should be mentioned is, depending on what the solution is, we might even have an expanded beach. So beyond our first
So beyond our first groin, beyond our jetty right now, who knows what the solution could be, but maybe that whole area in there might become an extension to what we have now in that we'll have to capture more sand to protect the bottom of the cliff as it exists right now. But I am in support of keeping the path closed right now. It is a danger. I think we need time to figure out what to do, and we need our expertise, and we need the neighbors to be part of that.
Dan?
Thank you. Councilmember Terman and Peter, your comments were spot on, and Jock, you verify what everybody else agrees. It's tragic what's going on on that bluff. I was fortunate enough to live on Depot Hill for two years. I lived at 106 Sacramento, and I walked that path many times. And nobody ever felt that they were unsafe at any time walking on that path or walking on Grand where there's probably three times the room. And I think, you know, I demonstrated my faith in that path because I convinced this council a couple of years ago to repave that path because I knew how valuable it was to people to walk there. It's not easy for this councilor myself to recommend that we close that path, but I think, looking at the picture, when you look at Block B, it's pretty apparent, you know, to the prudent individual, which is what we're trying to be up here, we're not geologists. We got the report because we didn't know how to make the decision. We wanted to know where the property line was, and to me, there's no way I could believe that that piece of land is going to stay there for very much longer, and I think that's what the geologist supported. And when I was up on that bluff today and over on Block A, I stood there today and I looked over and I said, "I would not want any of my children or anybody I know to be walking on that path. It's not safe." You know, I mean, it's a fabulous view, and it's, like I said, it's tragic that we're losing any more footage of our beach, I mean, of our bluff, but we're doing nothing about it. And that's the point that I want to take off on, and I think that's where the direction needs to go. Whether we open the path or close the path, that's not what we want to preserve. There is still 80% of our bluff that's in play right now that is at least 15 to 20 to 30 feet that we need to save. And unfortunately, you know, I think Councilmember Terman mentioned about the groins. I know that we're in the process right now, if I'm correct, of applying to rebuild the one jetty that we have. Is that correct, Mr. City Manager?
Your current budget, your current proposed budget does include funding to rebuild the jetty one.
And part of that, when we do that, we build that bluff, we're going to be required to do some kind of a sand survey to determine how adding rocks to that jetty affects the sand. And I think that at this point, that may be the start off or the key to get us moving on the possibility of adding more groins or jetties down there, which are not going to stop the erosion, but it certainly may slow it down. And if we're really serious about saving this bluff, if it really matters to us, then we don't stop with the groins. We have to apply to the Coastal Commission. I don't care if they're inclined to say no. They might be inclined to say yes, but if we don't apply, if this city doesn't get behind some kind of application to apply, then we're never going to know. And if it ends up that they give us authorization to build a wall or to shotcrete the hill or to preserve it, because it takes all three components. And I'm sure the geologist is going to tell me that even if we do put the groins and we put the wall and we shotcrete the hill, sooner or later, the ocean's going to win the battle in the long run. But I think it extends us for time, and it protects, and it's clear here that it's not just protecting the homes, because I don't want to make this about the homes. I consider that path up there one of our parks, and I consider it a commodity for all of Capitola residents because it's not just Depot Hill people that use it. It's people from every district in this town and its visitors. So I, you know, at this point, I'm going to support what the council's recommending to close the bluff. We're not giving away the land. We know where the property line is, we know where our land is. If somewhere down the road, we're able to stabilize this bluff to the point that I would feel safe putting our crews up there to work to restore the path, I'd be in favor of that. And, you know, the money that we would spend to rebuild that path was not the issue. It's not about the $40,000, it's about the safety of anybody walking on that path. And I do want to comment, you know, maybe it's hard to see and you can't look towards the future, but when I lived at 106 Sacramento for two years, if you want to walk in the backyard there, you can see the 38 angle degree of repose because I looked at it every day because it was in my backyard. That section of my backyard has fallen, and it's 38. I never measured it, but when somebody says it's 38, it looks like it's between 45 and something, so I'm going to go with that angle of repose. But it does happen, and it will happen over time. This is brand new. This is what we're looking at right now. And you can already see when I looked at it today, when I look at Block A, with the layer with the bedrock and the other surface is starting, you can look at it now that it's already starting to erode, it looks like it's going to be that angle. And, you know, I think when we say, you know, gambling for one or six years, it's not worth anybody's life, especially our crews or any other people. So I feel for you. I would like the city to take a full stand, like was mentioned here with the committee, and to move forward as aggressively as we can to save this bluff for future generations. Thanks.
Well, I'm happy to look at any ideas, but I'm rather pessimistic about keeping this path for very long. I think we need to keep it closed now. I think it would be great to talk to the Coastal Commission and get a preliminary feeling about what they think we can do about this, but I am not very optimistic about doing much, and I'm not willing to spend very much money on the city's part to do this. We have a number of other serious priorities this year to work on, and money's going to be very tight. So I think we'd all like to have it open, we'd love to have it remain as a public resource, but it's getting very close to the edge now, and we need to keep it closed. And we can certainly look into other options, but I don't think the city's going to be prepared to do much on the cliff. We looked at it before, and it was very, very expensive, and the city's, you know, has a pretty limited budget for those kind of things. We did the other side of the bluff years ago, and at this time, the homeowners were going to look into trying to fix that cliff here, and I certainly hope that they'll look at that again, but I don't think the city's going to have the resources to spend a whole lot of money on this. John?
I was going to make a motion, but go ahead. Do you have comments?
Yeah, I was going to make a motion too. But I'd like to talk with Jamie for a little bit. So if we were going to form a committee, and, okay, let's say we put aside the $40,000 because we could anticipate doing some work. So let's say that. And let's say that we're going to put off opening the path. We're not going to just jump in and put a gravel path. We want to study the situation. So if we're going to form a committee with citizens of Capitola on the deep coast, especially, how long do you think that would take to come up with something reasonable so we could have, you know, a set of options for us to consider?
Madam Mayor, Councilmember Bertrand, I think at this stage in the game, it's really important for the council to keep in mind the big picture. We have a number of very significant projects that are going full gear right now. We are engaged in developing the city's branch library, which is going to be the largest civic project the city's undertaken in the last 30 years. That project is taking a significant amount of our Public Works Department's time. We are also proposing to kick off the design process for the Capitola Wharf, which we've understood from the council is an extreme priority to get that fixed and get that done. We also have the other Measure F commitments, which include fixing the first jetty and fixing the flume, as well as all the normal Public Works projects. So I just want to put that out there that we have a very heavy workload and a lot of very high priority projects that we expect Public Works to begin delivering here in the next 12 months, and I want the council to be cognizant of that as you make any recommendations this evening. In terms of coming up with some sort of public process or committee to make recommendations to the city, I think it's really dependent upon where that committee goes. It's difficult for me to predict, I think, at this front end, what the ultimate outcome would be. I can tell you that everything associated with the ocean and Depot Hill and then the effects downstream and the effects on the geological resources and the paleontology, I'm going to get the word into fossils, is controversial. So I suspect that there would be lots of different viewpoints, and it would be a complicated process and involve significant resources.
One more question. Mr. Zinn, I believe? Yes. I have a question of you. So I don't believe these sections, A, B, C, are isolated. And to me, if we were just going to go after, at the base of that bluff, the cliff, and protect that isolated area, what effect, how good would that be, not doing it all together? So if you did just one section, I've heard of things being undermined around it, you would have to do the whole section. Would you comment on that?
That Block A, I think the bluff is buried, so I couldn't see it, but based upon the amount of sandstone blocks that I saw that are part of the landslide debris, and in the prior photos that I looked at that showed how undercut it was, I think it's freshened up and vertical now, so there's no notch to plug right now. But I think if you're going to, for example, if you're going to put frangible concrete in the notch, you're going to want to just do the whole area right there. You don't want to do Blocks B and Block C. Block B has an extra added problem. It has an overhung area that's well above the wave-cut notch, and probably the only way to keep that there is to do rock bolts or some pretty serious hardware and construction. So we literally would have to bolt those blocks. To keep them overhung like that, we'd have to bolt them in, or we'd have to construct a concrete pedestal that goes all the way to the wave-cut platform that lies below the sand.
Well, let me solve the city manager's problem and do something that doesn't involve any staff time because we know how busy the staff is. So I would move that we keep the path temporarily closed, and that either the mayor or someone, a single councilwoman she appoints, meets with residents of Depot Hill to begin the process.
Second?
Yeah, I agree. Just on your last response, I think this is a lot more complicated than the first blush, at least from my standpoint. And I think having a group of people that are definitely very motivated, as all we are, but you're living there, so I could see that as a higher degree of motivation. So that involvement, I think, is going to be really critical for trying to ferret out solutions.
Any other comments? And we have volunteers that would like to be on the committee?
Are you saying that you're going to pass on the?
I'd be happy to be on it, but I'd be happy to have another council member if they'd like to do it. Kristen, would you like to? Okay.
You want to take care of it?
Okay. Any other discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Thank you very much. Thank you very much. We'll work on this. Okay, the next item is 9B, the Mermaid Triathlon. We'll give everybody a couple minutes to read.
These are tryouts for the triathlon.
Thank you, Kristen.
Yeah, I know.
Well, the measure of where you live. I'm not sure if he's telling her she's in a conflict with the bluff. If she can't do it, I would like to be on the committee.
I don't think she has a conflict.
I'm talking about right now.
I think so, but what's your street?
Where she lives.
She has no property.
That's right.
Doesn't matter.
It does, actually.
There isn't.
The idea of putting cement pillars in everything she saw.
Okay, 9B, Mermaid Triathlon.
Madam Mayor, before we kick off, I just wanted to take a minute to acknowledge our newest fire chief here in the room. Unfortunately, I was remiss at the beginning of the meeting, but just wanted to note that Chief Stephen Hall lost the interim title several weeks ago. He's here today at our meeting, so I congratulate Chief Hall.
Congratulations.
I thought you were faster, and you could step back that one step. That's amazing. You're, okay, nicely done. Thanks for coming to the meetings. I appreciate them.
Good evening.
Good evening, Madam Mayor, councilmembers. You'll recall that in November of last year, staff came forward and presented our annual summary of special events. And during that, Chief Escalante made that presentation. And during that presentation, or at the conclusion of that presentation, the council directed staff to come back this year in '27 and give a presentation with regard to the Mermaid Series. And so I'm here tonight to present some information on the planning stages and the current application, 2017 application for the Mermaid Series, the event which will take place on October 7th of this year. I do want to introduce Carlo Faccino is here in the audience, and he has been the event organizer for quite a number of years, and so he'll be available for questions at the end of the presentation, but I do want to recognize Carlo. And so by way of history, the Mermaid Series began in 2005 in Aptos, and it continued in Aptos until the year 2011 where it started in our city of Capitola and has continued for the last six years. The Mermaid Series itself is an assembly of races for women exclusively, and it has quite a large, as you well know, quite a large footprint in our area, the village in many areas of the city during the day of the event, October 7th of this year, as I mentioned. That event includes an Olympic triathlon, a sprint triathlon, a duathlon, and then a small race for young girls as well. And so I wanted to cover in this presentation the designated areas and the impact areas for the city on that day, on the 7th of October. The course is, the largest impact area is the Upper Beach and Village Parking Lot. That's designated as the transition area for the entire event, and so the parking lot, Upper Village Parking Lot will be closed from 8:00 PM on Friday, the 6th, until 1:00 PM on Saturday. The course descriptions themselves, I'll go over them real briefly. The run course starts in the parking lot. The runners come out onto Capitola Avenue here. They go left to Stockton, up Stockton, across the bridge to Cliff Drive, from Cliff Drive to Opel. There's two courses. One of the turnarounds is just past Opel Cliff near 41st Street. That group turns around and returns, and then the longer race goes up towards Pleasure Point. The finishing area for both of those venues, both of those courses, is at Esplanade Park. That's the run course. The bike course is 11 and 1/2 miles. It starts as well in the upper parking lot. The cyclists head out onto Park Avenue. They stay on Park Avenue to McGregor. They take McGregor into Aptos to about State Park Drive. They turn around, come back on McGregor, back to Park. They make a right turn on Park, cross over the freeway, travel through Cabrio College for a good distance into Soquel, at which point, at another location, they turn around, make their way back onto Park Avenue, and they complete that race in the transition area of the upper parking lot. That's a fairly large course, 11 and 1/2 miles. The swim, of course, is in the water on the other side of the wharf, out around the wharf, and then the swimmers exit right here at Capitola Beach. There's one street closure, a substantial street closure, and it's both for the safety of the participants and the safety of spectators. That's Park Avenue from Monterey to McGregor. The no parking areas, there's three of them designated for the event. The first area is Wharf Road between the wharf itself and Cliff Drive. The second area is the east side of Monterey between Capitola Avenue and El Camino Medio. And then the third area is the west side of Capitola Avenue between Riverview and Stockton. Event staff, as is always the case, is responsible for posting signage 24 hours in advance of the event. They also send out postcards to all the businesses and the residents in the impacted area. We do a reverse 9/11 on their behalf as part of our planning and working in conjunction with Carlo and his crew. We also do Facebook, Nixle, and Nextdoor notifications throughout the city for the affected areas and citizens. With regard to some of the impact on the Capitola Police Department and our staff itself, you know that it's staffed by Capitola police officers, lifeguards from both Santa Cruz and our city, volunteers, pretty much all of our volunteers, and a good number of volunteers from Carlo's side that are coming from the local schools helping out with the event. For the last six years, there's been no significant issues, and I have underlined here significant issues or calls for service. There have been noise complaints in the past, and I want to compliment Carlo and his staff for working with us in the planning phases. As we debrief each event, and we do this each year, working with the event coordinator, as complaints come forward, we meet with the coordinators, we address those complaints, and we sit down and try and figure out better ways of staffing perhaps or planning or mitigating the complaints so that they don't repeat themselves in the subsequent years. And Carlo and his staff have done a great job helping us. 2016 itself, so last year's event, we had no calls for service. We had some citizen complaints. The majority of those were complaints directed at our staff, our officers, at fixed locations at the barricades. Citizens just displeased a little bit with regard to the traffic congestion and the impact on their lives here in Capitola during the course of the event. But we didn't have any calls for service, citizen calls for service. The fiscal impact, the cost of the staff time is offset by the event operator fees. And so staff's recommendation for council is to approve the Mermaid Series for 2017 and their request for a special events permit, and I'm more than willing to answer questions.
Chief, I think the complaint that was the most disturbing, and by the way, we have had noise complaints in the past, and the event coordinator has completely cleared it.
to answer questions.
Chief, I think, uh, the complaint that was most disturbing, and by the way, we have had noise complaints in the past, and the event coordinator has completely cleared up that situation the last couple of years, so I really appreciate that, thank you. With regard to the congestion complaint, I think that the one that really struck home was there were several residents of Depot Hill that were not allowed to get back to their house. There seems, it seems like there must be a way that we can coordinate that, either showing their license or some way to get through a barricade so they can get back into Depot Hill and get home. Can you?
And I, I can touch on that a bit, and then I might ask Sergeant Marquis Booth to come up here and join me, because he has been the sergeant in charge of the event from the Capitola PD side for several years. I know that it's a very fluid process, especially up at the top end of the parking lot and into Depot Hill, and there are periods during the day from 8:00 in the morning until conclusion, uh, at about 1 o'clock when everything is shut down, where we're having to control through our resources, our personnel resources, and staff resources on Carlo's side, the ability for people to pass when it's safe to do so. We do that frequently, as I understand, however, there are some Depot Hill and perhaps others who are impacted and not able to pass simply because of safety reasons when they're making that request. Marquis, does that cover? Come on up, Marquis. He's the best looking gentleman in the department anyway, so we're.
Uh, everybody keeps telling me that. Don't say it, but don't say it in his presence anymore. He's not going to fit the head through the door. Just leave it alone.
Anything to add to the, the question?
No, you pretty much covered it up. Uh, I think some of the frustration, uh, excuse me, uh, good evening, uh, some of the frustrations were, um, people not wanting to wait, and, uh, then when we were directing them up a different route to make it a little bit more fluid for us to allow them back into Depot Hill, uh, the frustrations with not being able to figure out where they were going. Um, but other than that, um, we are pretty responsive and we try to make sure that we're moving the traffic up there as best we can.
So not being able to get to their home is kind of an overstatement of the situation?
I would say, yes.
How long, now, how long do people have to wait? Because if, they only have to wait a couple minutes, I think that's one thing, but if they have to wait, you know, a long time, that's when they get mad, and that's, you know, we get the letters and the telephone calls and so forth.
Absolutely, and, and it's different portions, uh, during the race, uh, some wait times are a little bit longer than others. Um, like I said, there was a lot of frustration with people not being able to figure out how to get down, go around to Fanmar, and then come up that way also. So, um, I think that's really where a lot of the frustration came from.
Is there any way we can mitigate that, do you think? Besides send them on the, uh, you know, the scavenger hunt in the map? They live here.
I mean, if we could station a volunteer at the, um, entrance of Depot Hill, and as cars are coming down, just say, you know, you're not going to be able to get back for, you know, a couple hours or something like that, you know, to, to warn people, so if they want to change their mind, they can just go back home. But that was, that was the problem last time, is people didn't know that they were going to not be able to get back, and they're going to have to wait a long time, I think.
Right, Madam Mayor, that, that's a great point with regard to the deployment of our personnel and deployment of Carlo's staff and making sure that they're in the right positions. Based upon our review at this point, we think that they are. However, the, with regard to the question, is there, it's going to be difficult to mitigate, mitigate 100% of, of the frustration, but I think if we're fluid enough in our communications and the movement, the ability to move our personnel, uh, and where they're deployed, fluid enough to get them to other locations, potentially this location, then we're able to mitigate as best we can. Uh, I, I don't know that it's, uh, necessarily driven by the number of personnel resources or, or not enough personnel resources at the Capitola Police End. I think it's a matter of communicating and moving resources as needed to hopefully get a larger number of people when they make the request safely across the path or the street to their home.
Yeah, and just one comment, I'd be remiss if I don't say this. I think that, I remember back, some of, a lot of the problems, people getting to their home, but one of the complaints that we've had with the, with the events on the beach is sometimes during the event, the speakers end up being positioned facing towards the town instead of facing towards the beach. So just as a reminder, that if the speakers are, you know, up against the seawall or wherever they're sat, they're pointing towards the, the ocean or towards the event and not towards the apartments and the homes that are in the village, and I'm sure the, the coordinator is aware of that, just, just a reminder.
That was my question also, and in the report it says there will be amplified music. And, uh, my question is, what time are they going to start? Because if they start too early, it wakes people up and they get mad about that.
I believe it's 07 and concluded by 1:00 PM.
By, concluded by 11:30.
But we don't want to have amplified music at 7:00 o'clock in the morning.
Come on up.
Good evening.
Evening. So Carlo Faccino, I'm the event organizer, owner of the Mermaid Series, so, uh, so, some of the things that you're addressing, we, I can kind of maybe touch back on, on some of those residents in Depot Hill. But as far as the amplified sound goes, we have the Olympic Distance Course that starts at 7:20 AM, and so we do have to make announcements down at the wharf just to give them the safety briefings. Some, uh, most of the times, the lifeguard's making those safety briefings for the swimmers, and then, um, our announcer is starting the, the swim wave. So there's some announcements that are going on at, uh, around 7:15, 7:10, 7:15, um, down at the wharf. And then as far as any sort of amplified music, that won't start until usually around 8:30.
Just ensure the direction of the speakers, because it's, it's critical. I, I understand if you're, if your speakers are going towards the water, it's usually not a problem.
Correct.
And that's, you want the, your, your personnel to hear that, but sometimes we've seen them going out on the other way for whatever reason, so it's just, it's a conscious thing, that's all.
Yes.
Thank you. Are there any other questions? Thank you very much.
And, oh, if I can still have the, still have the floor for a second. Um, as, as far as the residents at Depot Hill not being able to get back to their houses, um, if they're coming, you know, from bay and they're trying to get across Park, uh, Park is closed, so that's pretty hard closure, and the officers are probably, uh, informing those residents that they'd have to go around and, and come up Monterey to get into Depot Hill. So, you know, one potential would be that we could add some signage, um, it would be on approval of your guys' that would be sort of like a detour, um, for those residents to be able to navigate down Capitola Avenue and then back towards Depot Hill, but if, I'm not sure, you know.
Signage is, that might solve the problem.
Depot Hill Detour Route, that would be great.
Okay, that's something I can work with, uh, Capitola PD to, to put into our permit.
Sergeant Booth.
Yeah, good, thank you. Thank you.
Thank you.
Are there any comments from the public?
I think Bob runs out of grace.
Good evening.
Good evening, Madam Mayor, council. Uh, Bob Adgren here. This has to do with the Mermaid, um, Festival. I, we have so many festivals in Capitola, I'm losing track of them all, but I know there was one, and I want to say it was the Mermaid one, that they blocked off Capitola Road. So as you left the village, you had to bypass Capitola Road, go all the way up the cliff, or Wharf Road, whatever it is, end up on, uh, Opel Cliff area, and to me, that was a big hassle. I, you couldn't come down Capitola Road or go up Capitola Road. I'm not sure if that was the Mermaid Festival, I want to say it was, but that was a big hassle. It was like, you know, just, you're, you're going way out of the way to get out of Capitola, you know?
Thank you.
Does this, anybody remember that?
I'm not sure, it's this event, I think it was another event, yeah. It's not, they don't close Capitola Road.
Okay.
Thank you. Would anyone else like to speak? Then I'll close it and bring it back to the council.
I'll move a staff recommendation to, uh, um, approve the Mermaid Series.
Second?
Any other discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, opposed? Motion carries unanimously, thank you. Item C, a notice of completion for the 2016 road rehabilitation project.
Good evening, once again, Mayor and Council. Uh, this is just a quick item on the, uh, 2016 paving project we did on Park Avenue, Kennedy Drive and, uh, Monterey Avenue, um, that project, worked on it, it actually completed back, uh, in early January. As we all know, in February, a, a large tree came down and, and demoed the bike lane, the newly built bike lane on Park Avenue. Um, staff had been hoping to continue to work with Granite Rock to make the repairs. Um, those are subject to federal funding at this point, so we want to comply with the federal requirements, which will require us to bid out the repair work rather than, um, do a change order into Granite Rock's contract. So what we're, uh, for you tonight is to finalize, uh, the Granite Rock's contract, uh, at a price, final cost of $1,373,030.78, which is remarkably only about, uh, 2% over the, uh, bid price, which is, uh, pretty amazing on that project. And then, um, authorize the allocation, uh, within the capital improvement program. There's actually money left over from that paving project and the paving project we did on Rosedale to begin the engineering of the repairs on Park Avenue. That's all I got, and I'd be happy to answer any questions.
Question, Sid.
Was the trees that fell, were those ours or were those the RTCs?
Without serving it, I suspect they are the RTCs, but I'm not positive. It really doesn't affect the FEMA funding or anything like that. Um, it's our roadway that's damaged and we have authorization to, to proceed with those repairs.
Just wondering if any of the money's reimbursable, if they receive FEMA funding?
So, um, RTC has actually paid for the bulk of the tree work that we've done out there so far?
I'm aware of that, I know they bugged you that, but what about our repairs?
Well, um, so far, we're going to give about 87% of it paid for by state and federal agencies, so that's, uh, we can talk about the remainder of that with them later.
Okay.
So the other federal agencies via FEMA or?
FEMA and CALO, yes, yes.
Office of Emergency Services?
Yes, sorry, excuse me.
Any other questions? Anyone from the public like to speak on this item?
I will move that we accept the, uh, recommended action of, um, noting the project is complete with its final cost, including the 78 cents, and issue a notice of completion, release the contract retention. In addition, authorize the budget allocation from Capital Improvement Fund of $100,000 for the engineering for the Stam dorm damage repair of Park Avenue.
I second that. Any other discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries unanimously, thank you very much. Last item tonight, the, um, budget allocation for the Capital Improvement Fund.